Twenty two thousand twenty five meeting of the Foxborough Board of Appeals. This meeting and the public hearings that we will be conducting is being recorded, excuse me, and broadcast by Foxborough Cable Access. The time being seven o'clock PM. Raymond Burt seeks a special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, Section 3.1.6, Table 3-1, Table of Uses, Use L-5, to construct a detached residential garage with a footprint in excess of 625 square feet and a height that may exceed one and a half stories. The subject property is located at 29 Shepherd Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, in the R-40 Residential and Agriculture District, and is not in any restrictive overlay district. Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Want you to come up here? So there are four smiling people up here. We all participate, but only Blair, Lorraine, and I will be voting, and in order to approve the application, our vote has to be unanimous. So we've gotten the materials, we've gotten your write-up, but anybody who's in the audience that hasn't seen it, or anybody is watching on video, if there is, probably hasn't seen it. So if you can just walk us through exactly what you want to do, that would be helpful. I'm sure we'll have questions for you.
Sure. So I'd like to build a detached garage with a finished loft above. So the garage is to house my truck, and so I'd like to be able to work on my truck. The truck sits in the driveway right now. I have a two-car garage that's attached to my house right now, but my wife's car and mine are housed in there. So I'm looking for a place to house my truck. On top of that, I'd like to build a finished loft space above where I can have my work-from-home desk, as well as a gym, probably a TV area, and just kind of turn it into a man cave, if you will. In addition, I'd like to also run water to the garage so that there is a bathroom there. I'm able to take a shower whenever I'm working on the truck or in the yard without tracking all the mud and dirt inside the house.
So you mentioned that you work from home. Do you have, what kind of work do you do?
I actually, I have a one-person office that just facilitates me in Plainville, so I pay rent there. I'd like to move my location to my house. So that's the purpose of the finished loft above. I am in digital marketing, so I'm 100% remote.
So do you have customers that come to?
No, 100% remote. It's just me, I work online on a computer all day.
So if you just tell us a little bit about the dimensions of the garage itself?
The garage, the planned garage is 32 by 24, 20 feet wide by 32 long. It's about 26 feet high.
And it would be what, at the end of the current driveway?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
End of the driveway, meaning if you drive up the driveway, you'd be facing it?
That's correct. Yes.
And the rest of, your other garage would be the right? Is that right?
Yes.
If I remember.
Yeah.
Are there other properties in the area that have similar garage space or existing?
Yes, they're right on Shepherd Street. On the other side, there was a new garage built, I believe, just a couple of years ago. I don't recall what address, but there is a detached garage, two-car garage with, I don't know if it's a finished loft space, but there are windows above the garage there. So it looks like it's a walk-up space at least. And there are a couple of others, and a couple of others in the neighborhood as well.
Have you been in contact with other neighbors? Has anybody reached out to you to?
Yeah, we're a very friendly neighborhood, you know, considering we're so small and no one has any issue. They actually like the idea, they want to do one themselves eventually, so no one has any problems with it.
Lorraine, questions?
Um, I don't think there's any issue with, you know, the garage in that area or anything like that. It looks like definitely fits into the area. I think this is just the first time I'm seeing a request for an oversized garage with plumbing.
Mm-hmm.
So just wanted to understand where we are with that type of scenario now.
So in the past, what we've done consistently, any application with an oversized garage is, number one, prohibit it being used for residential purposes. And in keeping with that, prohibited running water to the structure. Massachusetts has now passed a law that allows accessory dwelling units in detached structures. Obviously, they would need running water. I'm not sure, and Scott and I have had this conversation, I'm not sure whether we can now prohibit a detached structure from having running water because, and Mr. Burt may not be intending to do that, but a future order of that might convert it into an accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah.
And obviously, we'd need running water. So I'm not even sure we can, we probably can, but I'm just not sure of the ultimate legalities, and I don't want to test it in prohibiting running water to that.
I wanted to make sure that there wasn't something in place that had any kind of exception to the law that had changed, so.
It's just the accessory dwelling?
Okay. It's permitted.
Eric, do you have any thoughts on that, or?
Just wanted, some questions about the purpose. You've mentioned, it's just for you personally, you used to shower and clean up and things like that. I saw laundry as well as planned.
Yeah, any dirty clothes, muddy clothes. I'd rather just do it there rather than have, bring it to the house and check everything in there.
And it's not your intent to rent that out as a?
100% not. We've been in Foxborough for close to nine years now. I have two little girls, wife, and we'll be here for another 20 years or so. This is solely for myself and my space. And if you saw the letter that I submitted with the architectural plans, I'm willing to put a deed restriction in place as well, saying that, you know, the property itself, including its detached garage, as a whole, will only be used as a four-bedroom house, and the house itself has only four bedrooms. So it will not be an ADU, it will not be rented out. I can give you any kind of assurance you need for that.
I don't have any more questions.
Just the color, that's going to match the house, the siding and all that?
Yeah, absolutely. I might actually just change the entire color of the house itself, and I'll do the garage, change the color of the garage too, potentially, depending on the cost. Obviously, everything's very expensive nowadays.
Thanks.
Blair, anything else?
As the septic, the existing septic system obviously was built for a four-bedroom house. Is that, is there any extra capacity there, or is that?
There, well, there, is, I guess the question is, why wouldn't we need extra capacity?
Well, if you're, obviously, you're having additional water to the loft, so I'm wondering if, you know, that's more use, more water, more?
Not necessarily, though. Rather than taking a shower inside the house, I'd be, you know, potentially be taking a shower in the detached garage, right? So it's just the water's being transitioned, you know, the usage anyways. I'll be using the garage rather than the house.
If I may?
Yeah.
Border Health codes regulate on bedrooms.
Right.
Not how many bathrooms you have in a structure. So if his septic system is based on a four-bedroom home, it's only designed for that four-bedroom home.
As long as the loft doesn't become an additional bedroom.
If it does become and meets the minimum standards of an ADU, he would have to upgrade his septic system to meet that, to get a certificate of occupancy.
Fair enough.
So the fact that it's only four bedrooms and the loft would not be used for a bedroom purpose negates the need to upgrade?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yes, that is correct.
Other questions?
All I have.
Does anybody wish to be heard in this? You're not here for this. I know that you guys are not here for this, so, okay. Will we close the public portion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
And you're voting, so?
Yeah.
Second? Okay, all in favor? Okay.
You want to start?
So, you know, based on all the information, I think that the size is not incredibly large. I think it's appropriate for the area, so I would support it.
Yeah, I think we've, you know, we meet all the special permit criteria. You know, we've certainly done a lot of these in the past, the properties.
Yep.
You know, serviced by utilities, he's not creating any traffic or environmental issues. It's not the kind of thing where the community need. The principal use of the houses, of the property is still single-family residential, so I think you satisfy those requirements. Blair?
I would agree with Lorraine. I think, I think it obviously meets, you know, the neighborhood, the other houses that are in the neighborhood. Doesn't seem to be any opposition to it from that aspect, so I would support it.
Okay. The question of a restrictive deed, I honestly, personally, don't think you need one.
Yeah.
And I think, I'm an attorney, Eric's an attorney, Eric might disagree with me, but if I were your attorney, I would advise against it.
I prefer not to, but, you know.
Yeah, because it?
If that was a caveat to get this garage built, now, to ensure you have not been using it for an ADU, I would provide that.
Yeah, I've got a condition, I think, that'll, that'll address it.
Okay.
That was my thought, versus going that route, would be some type of condition to address that.
Because if at any point in the, in the future, you decide to convert this into an accessory dwelling unit, or if you sell the house at some point, you will at some point in the future, the restrictive deed will be, obviously, something that would have to be dealt with. And I think it would be simpler to address it with a condition that I drafted that hopefully the board will agree to, as opposed to the restrictive deed. So let me suggest that the following is conditions.
Okay.
Okay, number one is that the proposed garage shall be a detached structure with dimensions that shall not exceed 24 feet by 32 feet and a footprint of 768 square feet, and shall exceed 26 feet in height from grade to the highest point of the structure. Two, the construction and design of the proposed garage will be in accordance with the garage plans. Three, the garage will be situated on the subject property as set forth in the, in this plan, in the certified plan. Four, the garage shall be constructed of exterior materials that are of comparable type and color as the exterior materials with which the subject property dwelling is constructed. Five, the first floor of the proposed garage will be used solely to garage motor vehicles and store personal property. Second floor of the garage will be used for your gym?
Gym, home office.
I never want to say man cave. Gym, home office?
It's a man cave, yeah.
We'll say, and recreational area.
Perfect.
Six, the proposed garage shall not be used for any business or commercial activities as an intensive home occupation, as such terms defined in the zoning bylaw or otherwise, except in the event that a special permit is granted by the board pursuant to zoning bylaw Section 3.2.2, following a public hearing on an application therefore. Let me just say that the major difference between an intensive and a non-intensive is when you have customers, clients, coming to the, to the structure itself. And inasmuch as you've indicated that you do not have them, it would be a non-intensive, so you don't, you don't fall into that, that area. Seven, no portion of the garage shall be used as or converted into a bedroom, and the proposed garage shall not be used as or converted into an accessory dwelling unit or otherwise used for residential purposes, except in accordance with the provisions of such bylaws, rules, regulations, and requirements as they, as may be applicable there, too. Eight, electricity service within the proposed garage shall be restricted to single-phase electric service. Nine, spotlights other than those situated on the structure itself, and pole lights on the subject property that lead to or outside the proposed garage are prohibited. And 10, storage of combustible or hazardous materials within or outside the proposed garage, including gasoline and used motor, motor oil in excess of five gallons, is prohibited. Much of these conditions are comparable to what we've do in every, every garage that's oversized. The condition that I suggested relative to bedroom and residential uses, is that satisfactory?
Yes.
Eric, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Anything else anybody can think of?
Yeah.
Motion?
Motion to approve the application for special permit, 29 Shepherd Street, with the conditions as stated.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? So we'll write up a decision, probably within the next couple of weeks. You'll need to file it in the registry of deeds.
Okay.
And then you'll have to give Mr. Shippey evidence of the fact that it's been filed before he'll grant you a building permit. So if you have any questions with anything, just give Diana a call or Mr. Shippey and we'll answer them.
Sounds good, thank you all. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Nicole Bray seeks a special permit, or seeks special permits pursuant to Section 3.1.6, Table 3-1, Table of Uses, Use Groups E7 and L10, in Section 3.2.2 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, to allow a one-room preschool as a non-exempt educational use slash intensive home occupation at 131 Mechanic Street, subject property is located in the R-40 Residential Zoning District, and is not in any restrictive overlay district. Nicole? Do you have the, you filed?
I'm sorry?
You filed the conflict?
Yes, I did.
So hang on for a second. So as I mentioned in the other matter, there are four of us, and we all participate. Eric will be voting on this, together with Lorraine and me. Again, we want you to walk through this as if we've never seen anything before, and we will have some questions for you. And again, our decision in order to approve the request must be, must be unanimous. And Lorraine, when she finds it, has a disclosure to make.
Oh, boy.
She is one of your neighbors.
Oh, not in a butter. But neighbor.
You got it?
I think I do have.
You want something, or is it?
Yeah. So I did file a disclosure just because of the proximity of my home to the proposed business. I live at 126 Mechanic Street, and the purpose of that is to ensure that I have no concerns or ability to not be impartial in this decision. So that is on file with the town clerk.
Okay. Go ahead.
So my plan is to convert the barn structure that I have on my property currently into a one-room preschool for no more than 10 children. The existing, the barn right now is just used as storage, so we wouldn't be changing the floor plan at all, it'd be the same dimensions. And it would be a fully licensed preschool through EEC, so I'd have to follow EEC regulations as far as their codes and regulations. I would, my plan is to follow the public school, Foxborough Public School calendar, and be available for hours of operation between 7:00 and 5:00 PM. There, I know parking is a concern that comes up, so there would be no street parking. We have a horseshoe-shaped driveway where cars can enter through one side and then exit through the other. Technically, the ratio for staff, it's just one staff member to a group of 10 children, so I could be by myself, but my plan would be to hopefully hire one staff member at some point to maybe work part-time with me, but regulations say that it would, it's just one, the ratio is one to 10.
What, what is the difference between a childcare program and a preschool?
Just the, I mean, the names, daycare, preschool, they're all intertwined, but it's just really the age group. So preschool is 2.9 up until school age, so two years, nine months until they enter kindergarten, so five or six.
Now, is the curriculum that would, you would be following, is that yours, or is it something that EEC designates, or some combination?
There's no curriculum requirement. There's like state standards for preschools and childcare to follow, but yeah, there's nothing, there's no set requirement by EEC curriculum.
Now, will the barn be used for any other purposes, or solely for this?
Solely for that.
Okay.
Is it currently one or two floors?
So it's, so there's the basement portion, and then there's the main floor, and then there is a loft right now, almost like a full loft area. So my plan would be to cut down on that loft area, and it would just be about half of the space up there. It's, it's not in the best condition right now. I, I don't know if I'd actually walk on the loft at the moment, so it's, it's there, but it's not structurally.
Is it all unfinished at this point?
Yeah.
Have you started the licensing process, just out of curiosity?
I have not. I've attended, to get your license, you have to attend a potential provider meeting, which I attended, but I haven't gone any further. I just wanted to wait for this piece first.
Sure.
So for adding a bathroom and kitchen, how does that affect your septic situation?
So I, our plan is to put in a new septic. Our current septic is on like the complete opposite line, property line anyways, so putting in a small septic is the plan.
Specific to just the barn?
Yes.
So it'll be separate from?
Yes.
I discussed the septic issue with, with Matt Brennan, you know, the health director, and again, as Scott indicated on the prior matter, septic systems' capacity is based on number of bedrooms. We're not adding a bedroom here, again. However, I think you mentioned to me that the, it, there is, there are designations relative to how many gallons are flushed per individual per day. So as part of the building permit process, he would probably need to determine whether the septic system is of sufficient capacity to service both the, the house and the students. And that may need, may dictate either an upgrading of your current system, or as you indicated, you know, putting in a new system.
Yeah.
But again, because we're not adding a bedroom.
Yeah.
It doesn't go into that, to that issue.
Thank you.
Blair, any questions?
None at this time.
What is, if any, the plan for outside, like play areas and things like that?
Yeah, so my initial, so you need, according to EEC, you need 75 square feet per child. So I would at bare minimum, like to fence in a 750-square-foot area attached to the barn.
Meaning fenced in?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be in the back of the property?
Prob, so if you look where the entrance would be on that left side, it would probably come right off of there and work backwards a little bit. The back of the barn, the, directly behind the barn is, there's like a slope down into the garage to enter to the garage, so I don't, you would need a retaining wall, you would need more work to go back that way, so it would be off of the, that side entrance.
Would you need to cut any trees down in the back of the house, you think?
Not, no big trees, so the plan would kind of be to incorporate nature as much as possible, so no big play structures, more so just, if you're cutting down some trees, leave some tree stumps, some sand, things like that. But there's, there's a lot of trees, but they're small.
You, you had mentioned that there's a horseshoe driveway existing already. Will there need to be any modifications to that, considering the number of vehicles that may need to come in and off the road?
There won't, so it would be a staggered drop-off, so the hours would be eight to three, and then there'd be an extension on each side, so like a before-care program, then after-care, so there would never, I don't really, I mean, never say never, but there wouldn't be, hopefully, drop-off and pickups all happening at the same time, so it would be pretty staggered. My, when I was getting my plot plans done, he did mark off how many actual parking spots I have. I think the actual parking spots differ from what you can actually, like a standard parking spot is a lot bigger than what we can actually fit in there. So there was seven parking spots.
Seven?
Seven, according to his plans. We fit about 10 to 12 in there at a time, so, but if you're going by the legal parking spot measurements.
So there won't be any modifications to the entrance or the exit?
No.
At the road?
No.
Is it a paved driveway? I'm sorry if you answered that wrong.
It's paved.
So going to the plans that you've submitted, so the first floor will have your classroom?
Yes.
With a bathroom and a kitchen? And then on the second floor, would be an office that would be affiliated with the program?
Yes. So EEC for a out-of-home care program, you need a separate space that parents would be able to sit and meet with you.
Okay.
So I, I need an office space that could fit myself and two or three other parents for conferences or previewing a program and things like that, so. And it needs to be a separate space from the classroom space.
Do they specify how big that space must be?
No.
Okay.
It just says it has to be separate from the classroom space.
So also on the second floor, you've indicated, or the plans indicate, that there would be like an open area and a storage area. So is the storage for supplies and equipment?
Yes. There wouldn't, there's not going to be a lot of storage all on that main floor, because I need that 350-square-foot minimum for 10 children, so none of that will really be able to be used for storage, so we need some storage space.
And, and the open space would not be, would just be open? You're not using for anything?
So I, the, I had my architect, when we were going back and forth, about the 40% of your home.
That's where I'm getting to, okay.
Square footage, yeah. So I asked him to, if he could modify, because that would put, the initial architect, architect plans I submitted would put, if that loft is considered square footage, that would put me over the 40%. So I asked him to revise that, and he made a little bit of a revision, so it would be like a much smaller office space, and then the other half of that space up there would be unusable just for mechanical purposes only. So the office ends up being less than 100 square feet up in the loft area.
So I asked, because the plans were hard to, to read, I asked Scott to take a look at it, and he blew it up to something that was much larger.
Which didn't work.
Which didn't work.
I ended up using a magnifying glass.
Okay, well, I did too, but obviously, your, your magnifying glass was better. So the house has livable space of 1,899 square feet. Scott said that the area in the barn that would be devoted to, to the preschool, and this would be both the first floor and the second floor, is 975 square feet, and that comes out to about 51% of the principal dwellings habitable floor area. The bylaw provides, among other The bylaw provides, among other things, and we'll get to this a little bit later on, that the area devoted to the home occupation shall not exceed 40% of the habitable floor area of the principal residence. And Eric, do a quick calculation. What's, I think it's like 750 something?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Eighteen ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine.
Times 40%?
Seven fifty-nine point six zero.
So how do we get from 975 to 759?
So the lower level is 650 square foot.
Right.
So, so I had the house as 1,923 square foot. So I guess that would only be 24 off, which wouldn't be a big deal, but.
I mean, I'm going by, and I know Scott was going by the assessor's records.
Okay.
Which show living space as?
Eighteen ninety-nine.
Eighteen eighty-nine.
Okay.
And what number did you have again? Sorry?
Nineteen twenty-three? So is that just, that's just 24?
I think that's gross.
Okay.
On net, so.
I'm sorry?
That would not be living. I think that's the.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yep. So the lower level is 650 square foot. So then that would leave?
About 100 square feet, 100.
So right now the loft.
Thirty-nine point six, if you want to be technical.
Right. So the new plans, the loft is about 97 square feet.
So those plans, what you're saying, are different than what we have here?
I, yes, I had him write up a new plan for the second floor loft area because of the, I learned the 40%.
Okay.
After submitting.
Okay. Let me just also say that I was walking, I always walk down Mechanic Street, as Lorraine knows. And Ms. Gray and her husband were outside one day when I was walking and I introduced myself and I asked her to take a look at this issue as well, so. Do you have copies of that plan?
I do.
News of this.
Do you want a copy?
Yes, actually, if you have multiple.
I have multiple.
Great.
It's extra small, actually.
That's what they make the magnifying glasses for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I believe we spoke with her architect and we gave him the dimensions that it couldn't exceed. And it came to about 109.6.
Which I think is what Eric calculated it was.
Yeah. Which gives you about a 10 by 10 office space.
Yes.
If not, a little bit bigger.
I think where the stair, the way the stairs come up, it's more, it ends up being like an L shape, but it's essentially, yeah, about 100 square feet.
So now, again, the footprint is 650, that's the first floor. And what I can't read here without a strong magnifying glass puts you at a little bit more than 100 on the second?
No, I think it was a little less than 100, about 97 square feet.
Was I right, 97?
Yes.
This is proposed loft plan 77 square feet on here down. I don't know what that's referencing to.
Maybe 77 and 97, yes. Yeah.
That's where, what is this?
That's a 77.
Right, okay.
Seventy-seven?
Okay.
So now we would be under the 40%.
Right.
Because I was going to ask if we felt that, this, as far as I can remember, the first time we've had a home occupation in a detached structure, they've always been in, within the home itself. Diana would probably tell me if I'm wrong in that regard, but I can't remember any that's been in a detached structure.
There was one we didn't approve.
Okay.
Over near the Cumberland Farms on Mechanic Street.
Okay, well, that was different reasons though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Might have been a lady who was an accountant who had something in a garage.
Well, that was, you know, full bathroom, full bedroom and everything else, I think. That's one, yeah. But. One of the things I was going to raise was whether the 40% we just applied, whether we would leave the bylaw to say that the 40% we just applied to home occupations within the house or also within the structure. But I think if you read the bylaw literally, it has to apply to include the structure as well. But you're, you're under the 40% now, so. You're okay with this, Scott?
I am perfectly fine.
Okay. Did, I'm sorry. Any other questions then?
Did you receive any input from neighbors?
I did not.
No.
Are you gentlemen here for this?
Yeah, I'm actually one of the neighbors, yeah.
Actually, I'll get there in a couple of seconds though. You'll have to come up to the mic though.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else from us? Any other questions?
There's me.
Okay. Actually, why don't you join us? Tell us who you are, where you live, what questions or concerns or issues you may have.
My name is Connor Lally. I live on Five Villa Drive, so kind of behind you guys. My main concern would just be the number of children, like noise and privacy, and where the actual outside play area would be located. If it'd be more towards my property or more extending back into yours. Just because, I mean, we bought our house, part of the reason was for that privacy in the back with those woods. As you know, it's nice to kind of have that little break-in area. I have a dog, a young daughter as well, noise and children running around could potentially upset them. My wife works from home most days, her as well. So just kind of concerned with the number of children and where the outdoor play area would be and if it being fenced in, which I heard it would be.
Yeah. So our plan is to keep our home area and our kids' play area separate than, separate from the preschool area.
Okay.
So we want to keep our, the side on Villa, open for just us and our family. And then the other side of the barn would be the fencing area. So we would never, where the barn is in the property, we would never cross over into the other side.
Okay, so your property opens up on that side for the play area as well? I didn't, I didn't know your dimensions, your property really.
Yeah, so it's, it's two acres, so it wouldn't, do you have a vision of if you're looking at the house from the front?
So I'm thinking if I'm on my back deck and I'm looking, I can see like the barn way over there, that side of the barn?
Yeah, so the play area would be on the opposite side of the barn.
Oh, okay.
So, so just so I'm clear, looking at her property, you are located directly behind it or?
So if you're looking at like her front door basically, and then you go to the backyard, I'm on the left through the woods. If you don't Villa Drive, I'm at the first house on the right.
So if I'm looking at the barn from the street?
Yep.
Where would the play area be?
If you're looking at the barn from the street, it would be on the right. And then on the right and work its way back a little bit, almost like in rectangular.
So it wouldn't be between the barn and the house? I know you have a swing set, you know, in the back. That wouldn't be it, it would be on the other side?
Yes, it would be on the other side. Yeah.
So the, so the play area would be, he wouldn't be able to see that really because the barn would be between?
Yeah, it probably wouldn't be, it probably wouldn't even be visible.
Okay.
Because we want to leave, the plan is to leave a lot of the trees and.
Right.
Existing nature feel.
Perfect.
So yeah, it would be on the other side.
All right, that was my main concern, basically just if there would be like kids being able to encroach on the property lines and drive my dog nuts and then drive my wife nuts.
And again, as Ms. Gray indicated, the area would have to be fenced in, so.
Right, and that's what I was going to ask about. Exactly, and it sounds like they're going to be way on the other side anyways, so.
Yep.
Shouldn't be an issue.
There's no fence on the property, on the property line as it stands between your properties, just the woods?
Correct.
And the plan would be, you know, like there's no kids in the summer. It's just really that school.
Right, school year, the Foxborough calendar, like you were saying, yeah. Okay. All right, that addresses my concerns.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I don't think so, no.
Blair?
I have none.
Right?
No.
Okay, you want to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? As is my custom, I have a lot of conditions. None of which I think are going to cause any problems. So, and again, some of these are comparable to conditions that we've placed in other home occupations, including daycare. So number one, the special permit that's granted by this decision is specific to Ms. Gray and neither can be signed, transferred, or conveyed by her to any other person or entity, or be exercised by any other person or entity, entity, other than an entity of which Ms. Gray is the majority owner and principal operator. Ms. Gray must reside within the dwelling at all times in which she is engaged in the operation and performance of the preschool program with a special permit to remain in effect. Two, the preschool program shall be subject to licensure or certification by the, it's what Department of Early Education and Care?
Yes.
And all conditions and requirements of licensure and certification. And two, all conditions and requirements for the operation and performance of a preschool program that are imposed by DEEC. Three, subject to approval by, by DEEC, the portion of the subject property in which the preschool program is to be conducted shall be limited to the preschool building, the barn, with such structure to be designed, renovated, and used in accordance with the building renovation plan. And we'll obviously hit the right, the right plan there to make certain that there's no question. Four, conduct of the preschool program is restricted to weekdays, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM, with accommodation for the arrival of children as early as 7:00 AM and their departure as late as 5:00 PM. Five, not more than 10 children may attend and be provided services in connection with the preschool program at any single time. Six, the preschool program shall at all times comply with the intensive home occupation standards that are set forth in section 3.2.2 of the zoning bylaw. Seven, access to and egress from the subject property in connection with the preschool program shall be from single designated entrance and exit locations on the property's existing driveway. Eight, the preschool program shall comply with all directives and requirements that from time to time may be imposed by the Town of Foxborough Building, Fire, and Health Departments. And nine, consistent with the provisions of section 213-5D12 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, chapter 213, signs, one sign identifying the preschool program that is not larger than three square feet in area, that does not exceed six feet in height, and that a setback of at least 10 feet from the subject property's lot line may be placed on the property, and the illumination of such sign is prohibited. Anything else? Before we get there, I think you fully complied with all the accessory, of all the home occupation requirements. There's a limitation, obviously, we've talked about as far as the area that can be used. There are restrictions as far as numbers of employees and you comply with, you know, with those. Also, as far as the special permit requirements, I think you fully complied with them. You're not creating any really significant additional traffic, extra traffic on Mechanic Street, which in and of itself is heavily traveled. The principal use of the property is still your family's residence. There is a dire need for preschool programs in Foxborough. I think it's fairly clear there's a dire need in a lot of communities, but certainly in Foxborough. There are similar programs of this nature in the sense that we have a preschool program or the ability to have a preschool program at the Sage School. There's a daycare program on an abutting property of the Sage School. There are other daycare programs in town, as you've indicated, there is some similarity between daycares and preschool programs. So there's, there's nothing that you're creating here or would be creating here that would be of a different social character of, of any difference as far as neighborhoods. So I think you meet that criteria. The town's certainly going to benefit from this. It'll benefit from a financial standpoint, just the fact that the, the barn will be, will be upgraded. But I think more importantly, the, the community will benefit from the fact that there will be a preschool program here, so. Anything else? Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the special permit request for 131 Mechanic Street with the conditions as stated.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? So we'll, again, draft an opinion, draft a decision. It'll have to be filed in the registry of deeds. Once we do sign it, Diana files it with the town clerk. That starts a 20-day appeal period, okay? After that appeal period runs, file it with the registry of deeds and then.
You have to get it.
Mr. Shippey's hands.
You have to go back to the clerk's office and you have time to certify no appeals were taken. Then you go to the registry of deeds.
And it'll be in Mr. Shippey's good hands.
Your contract, submit that with all of the building permit applications, okay?
For commercial license. We'll get them.
Clerk's office will do your commercial license. We'll just do the building. Okay?
Any questions, just let us know, okay? Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, welcome. Want to come on up, Steve? Just bear with me for a second. All right, in March of 2023, we approved a special signed permit for a billboard along Route 95. It's on the property at 1 Springbrook Road. And that occurred after the need to revise the signed bylaw. Town meeting that did not approve the revision, and then a town meeting that did approve the revision. And then in, on March 16 of 2023, we, we approved the special signed permit. A little bit later that year, we, we modified the initial decision to increase the height of the pole on which the billboard is situated. So Mr. Ross, actually, about a month ago, I got a telephone call from Frank Spillane indicating that American Outdoor, which is the, the party to which the permit was issued, wanted to, to sell the billboard and obviously assign the, the permit to another party. I contacted Frank early in March to see if he was ready to proceed with it, and at that point he said no, because there were still some issues being, being worked out. And I guess within the last week, we heard, well, I heard it from Diana, who heard it from Katie Lang, I guess, that you had contacted the town manager's office.
Correct.
Relative to the issue. So one thing led to another, and fortunately Diana corrected me as far as what we needed. And I apologize for saying he needed a full application, but we have an email from Mr. Ross requesting that the, the signed permit be, be assigned to another entity, so. Couple of questions that I have, and number one would be, why, after all we went through, are you, is your company going ahead with this?
We, we were approached by another company, and I have a representative from Outfront Media here, Ryan Driscoll, and it, it made sense business-wise to consider this, and we would like to proceed with this.
Okay. So let me, a couple of other questions. Your, your position, Steve, is what?
I am a manager slash partner of American Outdoor Advertising III.
Okay. And the gentleman that's with you from Outfront, actually, you want to come up as well? Because I may have a question for you.
Yeah.
So your name?
Ryan Driscoll.
Ryan, okay. And your position with?
Outfront, real estate coordinator.
Okay. Steve, when did Outdoor Advertising, the Office of Outdoor Advertising approve the billboard, do you recall?
It would have been in 2023, I believe.
Remember the month or?
I don't, but I can, I can look that up. I mean, I can get you that information.
Okay.
So we have to renew the permit annually. So it's renewed every year and we just, we just renewed it, it had to be renewed by March 31 of this year. So it's been renewed for the next calendar year.
All right, I'll say March 2023. And when did the billboard first become operational?
So we had everything in place in, we had the. So we had everything in place in, we had the structure up in April. It took a little while to get the digital units, and then it took longer to get the power company to hook it up. But operational was August of '23.
Okay.
'24, excuse me.
'24? Now, have you contacted Outdoor Advertising as far as the, the sale and the assignment?
So it's a simple process where, once we get approval locally, and we do a purchase and sale agreement with Outfront, there's an amendment to transfer the state permit to them. So a simple process, the state Office of Outdoor Advertising meets once a month on the second Thursday of every month.
Okay, but you haven't contacted them yet, I assume?
No, have not contacted them, there's no, there's no, there would be no, absolutely no issue with them.
Okay.
Because Outfront is a license holder to operate Outdoor Advertising in the state of Massachusetts.
Okay. Now, there was a mitigation agreement that your company entered into with the town.
Correct.
And as I've indicated before, I don't really care about the specifics. You know, it's my position that when we consider a, an application of, for a billboard, that, I don't care how much money the, the town, I do care as a resident, but in considering the application, I don't care about the specifics of the, of the agreement itself, how much money would be transferred to the town, et cetera. One question that I do have relative to the mitigation agreement, is that agreement itself assignable?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be?
Assigned to Outfront, they would take over the annual payments to the town.
Okay. And are you aware of the contract itself and what it requires?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and there's no issues, no questions in that regard?
No issues on our end.
Okay. From your company's standpoint, no changes are going to be made to the billboard itself? No structural changes?
Other than just changing the logo from American to Outfront, no structural changes, nothing more than that.
Okay. That doesn't require no signed permit for that.
Unless you want me to make them.
No. That's okay. Any other questions?
No.
No, I don't have any questions.
It seems straightforward.
Okay, so, as is my want, um... What I, what I want to do is to order basically that three things be done, okay? And I want those three things to be subject to and contingent upon such authorization as may be required from the Outdoor Advertising Director. And we would want evidence of that, you know, provided, you know, to the town. So these are the three things that I'm saying we would, we would order. Number one is that the special sign permit granted by the board in case number 23-03 to American Outdoor shall be assigned, transferred, and conveyed to Outfront Media with such special sign permit to thereupon invest in Outfront Media. To the bond or other financial surety in the amount of $20,000 that American Outdoor was required to establish with the Town of Foxborough Treasurer in accordance with Condition 5 of the Board's record and decision in case number 23-03 may be released at such time as Outfront Media shall establish a bond or other financial surety in the same amount with the Town of Foxborough Treasurer. Such bond or other financial surety to be for the purpose of payment of the cost of the future removal of the subject billboard in the event of its abandonment. Now, do you have any questions with that?
Uh, no, sounds great.
And three, the mitigation agreement by and between American Outdoor and the Town of Foxborough shall be assigned to Outfront Media, and Outfront Media shall be responsible for all obligations and requirements thereunder, provided, however, that in the event that such agreement by its terms and conditions is not assignable, Outfront Media shall, as a condition to the assignment, transfer and conveyance of the special sign permit that is authorized herein shall enter into a mitigation agreement with the Town of Foxborough on such terms and conditions as the town and its discretion shall determine. All right, questions? Motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Wait, wait, actually, before, which one of you guys, you guys decide who's?
Blair.
Blair?
I.
Okay, you're on.
Okay. Motion to approve request for transfer or assignment of the special permit that was granted to American Outdoor to Outfront Media with the conditions as read.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, I'll write something up, we'll sign it, we'll get it. You probably need to give it to the Outdoor Advertising Board. You know, a copy of what we're going to, to draft to show that we've approved the assignment. So that's my principal reason of saying we want something in writing for you to utilize.
Whatever you need, we will get you, yes, thank you, appreciate everything.
Okay, great.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, what else we got? Minutes from?
January 16th. January 16th, my very, very short minutes, two mistakes, I forgot an H in Yegi, and I was trying to say "to the administration of the town manager's office," but town manager's office sounds way better, so I'll do that. Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Did Diana give everybody a copy of this? So these are the amendments to the zoning bylaw that I'm drafted. I've met with, I've discussed them with Scott. Scott and I have met on two occasions with Catherine Ferick and Gabby Jordan. I think we're straight as far as what we want. I will be meeting with the planning board next Thursday night to go over these, and hopefully they'll approve them as is and put them on the warrant. The ones that I think that are most important for us are items seven and eight. And as you remember, when we met in December, we changed course as far as non-conforming residential uses that were being reconstructed, and decided that if they were being reconstructed on a bigger footprint, or being, on a different footprint or a larger size, it should go under 5.6 instead of 5.4. So hopefully this language will clarify the situations in which we're under 5.4 versus the situations in which we're under 5.6. Several of the changes that are in other provisions are just, just corrective. Item three is one that's near and dear to. Scott's heart, that's the one that deals with the number of accessory structures you can have on a, on a single lot. And I'm going to tell the planning board, if they have any problems, to go talk to you about it, so.
Seems like a revolving door over there.
And I'm adding a couple of definitions. Scott likes definitions, so hopefully the planning board's not going to give me a hard time on those. If anybody has any questions about any of them, just give me a call during, during the week, as long as I have any comments or questions or concerns, okay? Before we, before I meet with the planning board next Thursday.
They're not that upsetting.
Mr. Chair, I'll probably be zooming in on that.
On the planning board?
As the other matter that we have, they have before them.
Yep, so the other matter, I think that Scott is referring to is, and I know I provided a copy to everybody, but the planning board will, will be opening a public hearing on site plan and special permit for the East Boucher property. And Scott and I spoke Monday, was it? With Kevin Weinfeld, the planning board chair, and Catherine Ferick, and who's the land use director, and Gabby Jordan, the staff planner, about that matter. I think they understand what our concerns are, what's prompting. They're getting the matter, and I'm hopeful that they'll take appropriate action, you know, as far as that goes.
Okay.
So far, we got nothing for next month?
A guy called me up, is there a County Street?
Yes.
So it's a house on County Street, they want to put it in addition, but it's a corner lot because there's some, something court, do you know this?
I think I've.
Do you know the corner, the corner of which street?
County Street and, I'm trying to find my draft things, because I started.
This week's been a whirlwind.
Yeah. It's like a, like a little, like, like a
Court?
Court, something court, yeah. Start with a B, maybe?
Belcher Court?
Belcher Court.
So here's what, until next?
Next Friday.
Okay. Did it take, did he indicate he might be applying between now and then, or you don't know?
He asked what the deadline was.
Okay.
He says the addition's on the other side of the house, but since it's a corner lot, I don't know if it's a variance or a special permit.
Okay. So we may have that, what we definitely will have, we're supposed to meet with Jeff Cook's attorney in April. We're supposed to get a list
Next week, right?
By next Friday, of what is related to his business and what is not, as far as personal items on the, on the property. And then at some point before that meeting, a representative of this board and somebody from Scott's department and somebody from the Health Department are to have a site plan visit, and then Attorney Almeida is supposed to be with us on the 17th of April. And that will be executive session. I've already talked with Bob Cutler about anything further that we have to do, and he said we can go into executive session on that.
And can I ask if I would be able to zoom in on that?
Yeah.
Because I'll be post-surgery.
Eric did, yeah, Eric did last time.
Okay.
Yep.
They turn the cable off, but leave the
Yeah.
I'll be post-surgery, so I will not be in, in person.
But other than that, I don't know anything else going on.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. So, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.